Thank you for tuning in to the Wilmer City Council Work Session for Monday, August 6th. We're conducting our meeting out at the Health and Human Services Building, and this is our first live meeting for the work session. So, Council, you had requested that to be done, and I was contacted by staff on Friday and sent an email, and staff made that happen from Friday to today, so thank you to staff for making that happen. Mr. Holland, thank you for working on that when you got back this morning. So, our city administrator was out last week, so I told them I'd give them some extra time, so if you're wondering why I'm explaining so much, that's why, to make sure we're live and it's all working. So, with that, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting. The first item is the non-union base pay health insurance. Mr. Meskey, our council liaison to the Labor Committee.
I will defer to the HR Director.
Good evening.
Ms. Beckman.
So, before you have the resolution to address the non-union employees' wages and benefits for 2018 through 2020, since all of the union contracts have been approved and signed, we need to address the non-union employees for 2018 through 2020 as well. So, the 2018 benefits listed in there are obviously already in place, but it does reference the 2019 and 2020 health insurance with the same employer contributions as the union employees, as well as the base pay and base pay ranges increased by the 2%. So, any questions? Comments?
I have one question. So, the 2% will be adjusted to the ranges, is that correct?
Yes, the ranges as well as the base pay.
So, all that's going up is the ranges are only going up by 2% on the top level, but then also on the entry level, they go up by that 2%, is that correct?
Correct, the minimum and maximum both increase by 2%.
Okay.
Other questions?
Just for information, how many employees does that include that are non-union base pay?
Yep. Should be about 11. I can double check, but yeah.
Other questions? Is there any reason not to move this to council this evening? All right, that'll be my recommendation.
Yeah, that was me as well.
Okay, so, Ms. Thompson, can you make sure that we get that moved forward?
Thank you. Next, we have the Public Works Committee, Public Works Update. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight, outside of one slide, I've kind of done more of a themed presentation, and tonight will be, I've touched on a number, a couple different parks, status updates on some of the parks projects we've got going on. So, that being said, outside of this first slide, I will give you a couple numbers based on the recent rainfall event we had, it was Friday night and Saturday morning. Depending on who you ask and where you ask the question, or where the results were taken, we'd have between two and three inches of rain in different locations around town. This, of course, was Friday night and Saturday morning, and then the storm sewer at this point is generally recovered. Obviously, we have a few pipes that are slow to recover, slow to drop in elevation, based on the elevation of the nearby lakes, or the lakes that they generally drain into, lakes and rivers. But, for the most part, we had the same half a dozen intersections around town that were underwater for an hour or so, they drained out for the most part, and the guys went out and put cones to kind of protect the traveling public from driving through the intersections as best we can, and then when the intersections are generally dry, or lack of water, free of water, we go and pick those cones back up. Miller Park, I just looked at that again today. Tennis courts are done, this is a picture, in fact, it looks like it's dated, maybe Friday. We opened it to the public this morning, there were some guys there starting at knocking on the gate at 7:00 AM wanting to play some tennis, and so we let them in, and they look great, they really do. Take a look, take a drive-by and go take a look at that. We started surveying today for the excavation where the play equipment's going to go, it's going to go north of the park itself, or of the tennis courts, in the recently excavated area, so just north of where the old playground was, we're going to leave the existing grass and trees that are in the northeast corner, we're going to leave that untouched at this time. This playground is going to go between the fence and that line, actually, that would go to where the new, or the existing grass is. Plan would be to next week, put that equipment in the ground if it continues to stay dry for us. Rice Park Security, we did solicit a couple quotes for cameras, I mentioned that we might do that, just to see what kind of dollars we're dealing with, so we've got those dollars in hand now, we can discuss that now or later, or whatever. We've not had any vandalism since last Thursday, we opened those restrooms back up, and they've been spared, and it's still heavily used, and so that's a good thing, and maybe we're okay, but I do have a number in hand if we need to consider putting that, putting security cameras up. I think it was a six-camera system, if I remember right, six or eight-camera system, that would look at all sides of the building, look at the park itself, and then also look at the splash pad. However, Robins Island, we got hit yet again last night or this morning, and so we have yet again cleaned those and rejetted and re-cleared those toilets and the sewers at the bathrooms at Robins Island, and so we've closed them until further notice, but there are outhouses or portable johns out there to use until we get a handle on that.
So, is this the same issue as was at Miller Park? From the picture, it looks like it is.
Rice Park, yes.
A Rice Park.
I reused the same picture, yes. The very same issue, toilets have been, styrofoam cups, plastic cups, plastic bottles have been intentionally stuffed and in most cases jammed down into the stools, and then the stools were used after that. In fact, the last time at Robins, when the outhouses were closed, or I'm sorry, the bathroom facility was closed, someone had climbed up on the roof and stuffed a half a dozen bottles down the vent tube, and then dumped sand down the vent tube, so it's absolutely intentional. That's, I hate to leave you on that note, so I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I'm curious what the cost is for the cameras, because I think we need to consider that, and it would appear that we probably need to consider it at both locations. I don't think we should make the entire community not be able to use facilities because of some.
Yep.
And I think until we start enforcing it, we're going to continue having problems.
Sure. I had a, let me back up a little bit, and then I'll give you that number, I had a conversation with a gentleman last week who was concerned that they weren't open, and his taxpayer dollars paid to have them open, and I reminded him that his, you know, taxpayer dollars also paid to undo the vandalism, so, you know, where do we draw the line? And then it's frustrating, it's brand-new facilities, and the Rice Park situation, and, you know, maddening, our guys could be out doing something else, instead of cleaning up after someone that's unnecessary. The number we got was in the $6,000 range to have a complete system of cameras at Rice Park.
Where are those monitored, then? Would they be monitored at the police station, then?
You know, I didn't read through the whole proposal, I don't know whether, I don't think we've tied them into the police station, but I think they were recoverable hard drives or memory cards that we can, that have a limited amount of space on them, and so then someone would have to go get that, much like a game camera, obviously, more depth than that, but we would either go and plug in, or retrieve a memory card out that we could get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe game cameras would be cheaper.
Game cameras would be probably cheaper, yep.
Councilmember Meskey.
I'm curious if multiple systems could decrease that price. I mean, Miller Park's one thing, I mean, or Rice Park, but I'm thinking also the city offices would be another place. I'm wondering if maybe these systems, if we can have, 6,000 isn't, it doesn't seem like a very large number with some of the other expenditures we have, especially if you can lose over $2,000 or whatever numbers of theft that can actually occur, it would be nice to be able to have multiple systems and a quote that may have several systems.
And we could absolutely look into that, I wanted to get on that one quicker, quickly with the Rice Park, because I mentioned that a couple weeks ago, that I was going to look into that. I don't see why we couldn't say, well, what if, you know, scenario, it's at this point, because of the dollar amounts, it doesn't have to be a sealed bid, it's quotes only, and so we can say, you know, what if we add the Miller Park tennis courts and the Robins Island, you know, bathhouse and City Hall and Rice Park, and, you know, then what's our number look like, and that'd be pretty easy to do.
I appreciate that. Councilmember Allison, followed by Alvarado.
So, the cameras that are out at the destination playground right now are direct to the police department, are they not?
Yes.
I don't know that answer, to be honest with you, but they only deal with the playground, they're only pointing at them.
No, I understand that, but I'm just thinking, as we continue to do additional amenities out there, maybe that's something that we just need to look at, and even with Rice Park or Miller Park, we've got community correction officers that are out and about too, and if there is issues, it'd be nice to be on top of that as quickly as possible.
Well, and we can, where I thought you were going with that conversation, is we can, whatever that system is, if we can expand that system at a, you know, at a pretty good rate, we would do that. I mean, I don't know why we would have two different, or completely different, systems out there, and as far as the, as far as specifically the one where they were up on the roof, that's absolutely an offense that could be, if viewed by an officer, could be taken care of at that time. And they are going to be potentially, you know, some more patrols and those, for that type of thing, so.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I want to thank you for going out there and checking on the rain situation, and being proactive. Obviously, it's a big concern of ours, and so it's good for you to be out there scoping it out, so to speak.
Well, and in my, in defense of the guys, it was not me, but it was checked on, yes.
Okay, good, appreciate that.
Yes.
Councilmember Meskey.
In regards to flooding, we often talk about, and you've been using this year event, a two to three inches over the two days we have, what would that feel like? And then I know we keep, we have started to put some money into some mitigation of flooding, and additional funding, and if local option sales tax, there'll be even additional flooding. So, after you got that question, the follow-up will be, even with all those mitigations, will we not still see water in streets as they ebb and flow? Because I know people, I think are believing that we would never have a street even flood after all these mitigation issues, so maybe you could put some perspective on that.
No, and I appreciate that. So, the first question, I'm glad you did ask that, because I was, I anticipated that question may come up, and that particular event, Friday, Saturday, would have been less than a five-year event, you know, given on a per-event or per-year basis. So, that being said, it was not a large event, but it came quick enough that it overwhelmed the storm system that we have until it had a chance to catch up. So, what we've got going on in Wilmer is flat grades, very little fall between here and the outfalls, it outfalls two different directions, and so it just takes a long time to get caught up. The system itself, or the, some of the storm projects themselves, that we've looked at for the, if the sales tax goes, that's, you know, we've got some ideas for that, we've done reports in the past on what projects could be done, what large project could be done, but by and large, when water elevation rises due to rain, it doesn't matter how much storm you have underground, because it's all full. And so, the way it's set up, and by and large works very well, is that the water in the streets, water goes into the streets or backs up into the streets and stays generally out of people's yards. Now, when it backs up too far, it will get into some of the lower-line yards and driveways, but in this case, as long as, even if we had larger pipes, it's still an elevation issue. And when the elevation drops, then the water drops out of the streets. And in this case, the pictures I've seen of what happened this Friday and Saturday, most of the pictures I've seen, the curb and gutter was still visible, and so it did flood the street only, but it stayed in the street in most cases.
So, we probably are, we're design-ready for a five-year event.
Right, and I've heard in the different numbers, you know, one-inch event over a certain amount of time, but yeah, it generally handled this event, this five-year event. Most, what we asked new developers to come in is designed for a 10-year event, just to give themselves a little bit of additional freeboard on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the information, Sean. If I'm not mistaken, every direction you leave Wilmer, we go uphill. We're kind of a pan, and there's just a few low spots where we can get this water out, a couple creeks, cricks, creeks. You know, the first thing on everybody's mind is get rid of the water fast, we need to do just the opposite. Let it run across your yard from the gutter and into the street, slow it down, and it is working, all these retention, not ponds, but retention areas, they're all over the city, and we need to educate the citizens probably on the fact that, don't worry about the water if it's up to the top of the curb, it's supposed to be there during a rain, and then it'll slowly go down, and it just, and sometimes it just takes a matter of 45 minutes, sometimes a couple hours, but somehow, if we could get the information out to the public to slow the speed of the water down as it leaves Wilmer, it's going to leave, but it just needs to take time. I've got a retention or detention pond in my backyard with a city put-in drain back there, and it works, it works, it fills up, you know, three, four feet, and then goes down 45 minutes later. So, somehow, maybe the newspaper can put the word out to people to expect water to sit in these detention areas, whether it's the street or somebody's backyard, and they're all over town, and we've discussed this before, and they do work. As far as the cameras, it's a shame that we have to watch people, it's just, you know, 30 years ago, or maybe longer than that, the police chief advocated for cameras downtown Wilmer, and we fought it vehemently. We didn't want them now, we didn't want to be watching the people. Well, today, you have to assume you're on camera wherever you're at, you do, it's just, wherever you go, you just assume you're on camera, so act properly. I don't like the fact that we have to put them out there, but I do have a few ideas that I'll share with you later, could probably save us some money and still have the same effect. And again, thanks for you and your crew for doing what they do when we do have the high rains.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got one more.
Councilmember.
Thank you. I know we've been talking about our water quality and mow-in, I don't know, I must have had a bad streak, but in my neighborhood, it seemed like everybody was mowing incorrectly. And it's like, you know, and I remember younger, making mistakes too, but don't do that anymore. Kind of piggybacking on Ron, maybe we've got to start earlier to try to educate people rather than the middle of the mowing season about mowing in, because it was, it was like an epidemic in the neighborhood, every block, it seemed like two or three people were mowing incorrectly.
Sure. And we can do, Councilmember Alvarado, we can do that, you're exactly right, we can start that campaign, if you will, or that conversation in March.
Yeah, I think that probably would be a great idea, just food for thought.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Duluth Lake Superior Lighthouse Letter of Intent, Mr. Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this was first brought to our attention, I think brought to maybe everybody's attention, per a Star Tribune article that was posted, oh, maybe a month or two ago, regarding the fact that the Army Corps was potentially looking at a new home for their lighthouse that sits out at the end of the pier. Right away, it kind of piqued my interest, and Rick and I talked about it a little bit, and we thought, man, might be kind of a cool idea, real iconic symbol, what, you know, what might that mean? I know that a lot of people coming and going through our local regional airport, the first thing they notice is that F-14 Tomcat sitting there, and they're like, wow, that's, you know, little airport here in the middle of nowhere, and we got this, we got this jet, a fighter jet, and that's pretty cool. And beyond the cool factor, we didn't have to buy it. Now, there were some moving expenses, there were some maintenance and stuff like that, but anytime that we have the opportunity to capitalize on another opportunity, put out there by a municipality or state agency, government agency, I think we should at least look into it and find out, is it something that could benefit our community? With respect to that, I did some of my own personal looking into it, and here's where it gets a little bit tricky, because the first two people that I contacted were both with the Army Corps of Engineers, and the first two people that I talked to said, nope, absolutely not, that lighthouse is not going anywhere, there's no, there's no validity to the article, we need, you know, that needs to stay in operation, it's not going to happen. I thought, boy, that's really, you know, kind of convoluted message to be receiving. Well, one of them did, I sent them a hyperlink to the article in the Star Tribune, and I said, okay, well, this is the reason that we're asking, and, you know, it kind of reads like this, and he goes, well, you know what, maybe we're answering just a little bit too quickly, maybe we got to look into this just a little bit more, so. There's a plethora of people that work in that agency, obviously, he was able to find somebody that knew just a little bit more and had a little bit more detail, and sure enough, there is a United States GSA contract out there, and the offer is out there, and it does appear to be valid and legitimate, and in reviewing the paperwork that I see that the city has here, this matches what I was sent. And now, I didn't, it took a while to get this, because apparently, things in government move slow, so I'm told, but that was a little dig at ourselves, but that's fine. But I am happy to see that, in fact, yeah, there are those with the proper channels to the project that says, yes, this thing is real, here's the steps that you got to go through in order to obtain the information that you need, and here's the steps that we can take, and also, we can ask the questions that need to be asked ahead of time regarding maintenance and regarding any easements or long-term leases, and I know that that's, I believe that's how it operated with the Air Force, is that we have the F-14 Tomcat on a long-term lease. So, it's actually not our fighter jet, so we can't slap some engines in that baby and go for a cruise anytime soon, Mr. Mayor, apologies.
Could you pilot?
I could try. I could get it off the ground, getting back's another story. But I think, you know, that's an excellent, it's an excellent avenue to go down, and now that we, now that we know and are in touch with the appropriate people, I think it's an excellent, an excellent idea for us to not only gather some more information, but then to start putting the list together, okay, what do they need from us, and start asking the right questions. What are the actual costs? Because there's, there is no such thing as free, let's not go into it with our heads buried in the sand, thinking that, oh, man, we're going to get a free lighthouse, this is great, because it generally does not work that way, there's fine print, and, but I still think, at some cost, at some point, I think it could be a very cool, valuable and iconic item that we might be interested in having here as a part of Wilmer, especially with all the work and all the excitement surrounding Robins Island and the development that's going to be taking place out there, that has taken place out there, and what we hope that region to kind of be in terms of an epicenter for community activities and stuff like that. So, seems like an opportunity worth pursuing to me, and I'd be interested in hearing whether or not the rest of the council was interested in that. Like I said, not just a stamp of approval, yeah, let's go for it, more of a, hey, let's go through the appropriate measures, and let's ask the right questions, find out what this is going to cost, and what all the details and the logistics of it are, and then get back together, bang heads and say, hey, is this something we want to go after? Because I think this would be a great location for it. That's the end of my dog and pony show.
Excellent, okay, questions? Councilmember Schwantus.
The letter of intent needs to be submitted by this Friday, correct?
I believe so.
Reference is August 10th, so I would say if we do have an interest, that we need to at least get the letter of intent sent off right away, and it might take us longer than that to do diligence, should we be selected to be able to move on to that next step of really taking a look at it and analyzing it, and what its costs and such would be, but it's a pretty short window of time, so.
It is a short opportunity, it's a little bit disappointing, too, because the first people that I talked to was, there was a few weeks delay in the back and forth, and they were very adamant about, no, there's no way that whatever happens, not going to, you know, not even worth your time pursuing. Kind of felt like, man, this really isn't, this isn't how it reads, this isn't how it looks, but I'm happy that we hit the right people, and we happen to be yet within that timeframe, so, yeah, jump on it, we'll maybe squeak right in that window, and maybe it is meant to be.
Councilmember Nelson.
So, just looking at the document that's in here, the letter of intent is pretty generic, just we're interested in who we are, and that's it. It isn't talking about how we would do it, or how we'd fund it, or how we would move it, or any of that, it's just saying we're interested and we want more information.
That's the take that I get, after talking to the individuals that I have with the USGSA, I think is the correct acronym for it. Yeah, then they go to like a Level 2, so they vet out all the, no, this, you know, this is not right, this is not right, and they take the big pool of candidates, and then they, I think it gets a little bit more intensive from that point on, now they want more details. Okay, what exactly would you do with this thing, where would you put it, you know, do you have the capacity and the capability of caring for it? As the one individual put, he said, you know, everybody and their brother wants a lighthouse in their front yard, and I can only imagine then the number of letters that they would be swamped with, but there are certain governmental contracts and stuff that go along with that, and I think pre, the pre-vetting stage is probably where they're at right now, as I understood it, and I think Wilmer would easily qualify to make it right on through that pre-vetting stage, and then we'd get into the area where we are exchanging information that is more valuable to them and to us, and allow us to ask the questions that need to be asked at the same time.
Councilmember Meskey.
It is a unique opportunity, and in light of where we are in that process, I would have no problem supporting the interest moving forward. There's a lot of questions that I would have as we move forward, and particularly the sentence that it says in here, the ability to handle maintenance and historic preservation requirements, I don't want to be cynical, but we have done a very good job of that, and those have to be very, very clearly delineated, so we know exactly what the expectations would be in the cost of maintaining these things, because we have our own historical preservation maintenance that we have to deal with for some of our other facilities in the city. But as far as expressing interest at this point, I think it's unique enough that we should probably move that next step, and then we'll answer these other questions when we get to them, but, yeah, I like it.
If I may just respond, yeah, I believe it seems a lot similar to the airplane out at the airport, and the reason that that's kind of nice is because that was almost like a micro experiment, so to speak, with how to work with these governmental agencies, federal agencies, and contracts, and figuring out, okay, what their expectations are and whatnot, and I think, I don't know that it's ever really come back to the council desk in my four years here, I don't know that it's come to the council chambers, you know, we've run into this problem, or that problem, or whatever, but I know that there's annual maintenance that goes on out there, and there are certain compliance issues that have to continue, but it seems like we kind of got those nailed down out there, and we don't even hear about them. So, that does give me a little bit of confidence that there is, we do have the ability to put the mechanism in place, that something like this could happen and could be managed well. So, then that's not to say it would just automatically So then that's not to say it would just automatically fall into place. No, we have to ask those questions, but I, I do believe it's possible.
Okay, I've, uh, I, I have attended a few meetings on this. I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Palman and his assessment. Um, there are a number of people within the community that are willing to sign on the letter as well. And so we will have a very favorable letter, uh, being sent from the city of Wilmer with a lot of partners already identified. So, um, if the council wishes, we can move this to the regular council agenda.
Please.
Okay, we'll do that. Uh, discussion of city-owned equipment policy. Mr. Holland or city administrator?
I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I was asked to draft a policy, uh, that is now before you in your packet, addressing a situation that had occurred, I think, informally where, uh, certain equipment owned by the city had been made available to nonprofit organizations in the community for use at, uh, community events that are open to the public. And the thinking was there needed to be some sort of definition to that process, probably some sort of designation of what equipment would be available for that kind of use and some uniform terms that would be, uh, applied to all organizations, uh, that would seek to avail themselves of this opportunity so that staff had guidance on how to handle cer- uh, requests going forward. Um, the policy that I've put together, uh, has been reviewed by city staff. We have, I think, made some changes along the way. I see there's still a few highlighted stage directions in the draft in your packet tonight, so we'd have to clear that up before, uh, it's finally approved. But the gist of it is that the city administrator or the administrator's designee could essentially designate the list of equipment that would be made available for use by community organizations. Um, some of the items that were brought to my attention that could be made available are the city's showmobile, um, an extra stage, picnic tables, bleachers, barricades, tables and chairs. Um, and again, as such other equipment that the administrator may designate as available under this policy going forward. Um, there's a few ground rules that would be established and uniformly applied, namely that the equipment could not be taken outside the city's boundaries, uh, except for in extraordinary circumstances with the administrator's advanced approval and writing. Um, there's a uniform application that we put together that anyone interested in using city equipment would fill out. Um, there's a deposit requirement of $200 per item of equipment requested that would be returned when the equipment is returned to the city unharmed. Um, to the extent there was damage to the equipment that the city needed to address, that would come out of the deposit and hopefully that's enough. Um, we have also established a procedure that the city would follow to either release the equipment to the organization or deliver it to the site of the event. Uh, there'd be, it was suggested there be a pickup fee or delivery fee, so we suggested that would be $25 per pickup or delivery, um, per piece of equipment. And I think that pretty much covers it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have on this draft.
Councilmember Mesky.
Just curious on those, um, I'm assuming, I'm assuming maybe this was taken as a template from someplace else or something, but I'm curious about the numbers in it. Um, the $200 per item, is that sort of a standard thing or is it one of those things where, I mean, I don't want to make the policy much longer, but to me, a $200 deposit for the stage versus a picnic table is very different. Um, I'm curious about that, number one. And then the delivery and pickup rates, are those standard or, I'm curious about the, just where those values come from.
Those were, uh, at this stage, I would consider them suggestions to staff and I see they're still highlighted, so we'd still need to clear, you know, clear that up. But I do think there could be room to, uh, I, I, I think we had put some language in, uh, allowing the administrator discretion to change those amounts, uh, if the circumstances warranted it. So if that's not in there already, we'll try and circle back and address that.
When we went over the agenda, we were told by staff that, um, the highlighted items are still to be negotiated or still worked out with the administrator. The administrator was out of town and so that wasn't able to get cleared up before he came back. So, and they wanted to get it in front of the council.
I'm good with all the non-highlighted stuff.
Okay. So my understanding, is that right, Mr. Holland, that the highlighted stuff, the stuff that you have in.
We're still, right, we're still, uh, under discussion for that, but we wanted to get this first look in front of the council.
Councilmember Nelson.
So we reference, um, not-for-profits and I'm curious about other government entities or, um, if we wouldn't be willing to share some of our equipment, if there was a regional, regional event that might be outside of the city that the Wilmer would be participating in? So I'm just, I know you addressed that a little bit, but I'm just curious about it being too restrictive if we're, if we're working together with other, um, you know, other cities or other, um, school district or other things that we couldn't share some of our things, um, on a regional event.
This policy wouldn't prohibit me from the county calling me up and saying, I, we need six picnic tables. Would I require him to fill out a form and give me $200 deposit? No. Um, so intergovernmental, we all have our insurance and our cooperation, so, uh, this form would be strictly used with nonprofits, but other government entities, whether it's the school district, the county, the state, uh, I would not require that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, would, would the city be transporting this, this stuff? Would we, we, would we be taking it from point A to point B? Or would we be letting the nonprofit that wanted to use it pick it up? Does it, how, what are you thinking on that?
I think it could work both ways. It's just depend, dependent on the situation.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, how has this been handled up to this point? I mean, how, uh, how, where we collected the rent and, uh, have we not required insurance on these items when they're rented out? I mean, I know we have, uh, rented and to nonprofits. How's it been handled up to this point? I mean, this is a long policy, really, really long. I mean, but how, how have we handled it?
Mr. Holland.
It, in my opinion, it has not been handled properly. That was one of the questions when I arrived and I saw that, uh, city-owned equipment was being borrowed or used at no cost to nonprofits. And that's when I brought up to Mr. Brizendine that I'd like to have a policy developed so that to protect us primarily for our liability issues. Because as you know, even though you loan that out, you have some liability when you, uh, give that to someone else for usage. And so that started the conversation. Prior to this, there was no requirement. Uh, a lot of times it was just given to the, uh, organization or the event with very little to none as far as paperwork and insurance.
Have we had any bad experiences? I mean.
We haven't had since I've arrived. Uh, have I had it in other communities and read about it over the years? Uh, yes.
I think I know your position on policies. I missed somebody on this side, I'm sorry. Call.
Mesky. I thought you raised your hand.
No, I'm still.
Scratching your ear.
Councilmember, uh, Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously Rockin' Robins will be affected by this, but are there any other organizations that regularly use this, our, our, um, equipment that it would impact them in any negative way?
No, and, and that's a very good question because you look at, is this gonna put an undue burden on someone? Is this gonna stop someone's event? And I think that's one of the primary things that I keep in mind as far as, you know, the rental cost or the deposit, make sure that they can get it back. But we have different cultural events here in the town that use it. We have the Relay for Life, they use different things from bleachers to the stage. And so there's some regular annual events. Would it impact them financially, you know, detrimental that they couldn't have their event? No.
They also have Wednesday in the park, music in the park. And I know that they have a very, very limited budget. I don't know, but I think that this gives, the way I read it, it gives the administrator enough leeway that he could work with Mr. Benson when he did that event. Because I know that they hardly have any money. All they do is, you know, collect a dollar probably from each person when they pass the buck and then maybe half the people give, you know. So I think, is that what you're?
Right. That, I didn't know, farmers market or whatever. But there are some organizations that are very small and they really are providing a service rather than creating jet, re- generating revenue. And so I just wondered who, who that might be and if there would be a negative impact to those services.
Nice. It, it might be good for us to cover the liability side of it. I'm just curious about the fees and, um, you know, how much we actually, how much revenue would we have had in the last year and is it more about covering liability than trying to cover other costs?
It's certainly not a revenue generator and, and again, the purpose is to protect us as far as liability and for protection of the, uh, the equipment. Um, and it's, and my experience has been when you give something for free, uh, versus when someone pays for something or has a little bit of money into it, they tend to take care of it a little bit better. Not to say that we've had people abuse it, but I'm just saying in general, that's a good practice to have so that if something is damaged, they know that, uh, they will be responsible for that damage. And then we don't go into litigation of, as far as what, uh, should be, um, recouped or not.
One last thing I would add is that, um, the $25 fee for drop-off or pickup, when we think about the amount of time that our staff is putting into, um, delivering these items or picking them up, yeah, it, that's a pretty sweet deal. So my, I don't want my question to be taken as, uh, being against this, um, policy. I think it's practical.
Councilmember Mesky.
I would say those are all still highlighted items that we're talking about. And so I, I think the non-highlighted stuff addresses the liability issues. And I think some of those highlighted ones, I would be leaning towards a lot of discretionary, uh, information there from the city administrator versus a lot of hard, fast numbers there and what constitutes a piece of equipment and so on and so forth. So I'm looking forward to seeing the, uh, highlighted ones worked out. So thank you.
And I'm certainly hoping, and I think probably a lot of you are thinking the same thing, we're not gonna get a $200 deposit per chair or picnic table.
Or barricade for you.
Or barricade, correct. Yeah. That's why I'd ask for this to be cleaned up before we got it, but they'd said they wanted it to come tonight, so. Councilmember Nelson.
Just still struggling when I think of some of the events, um, when you look at Wilmer Fest or you look at the, um, the day that's coming up this fall for arts and those types of things. Some of those are really good events for the city, good events for the community. So I'd hate to see them say, well, we can't use the band shell anymore because we can't afford to pay for having that, um, with that. So I hope we'll be careful that we aren't, um, turning people away or making them look for another venue. Um, I think that's happened with some of our facilities when we've started to rent, that people have had to look outside. And so I hope we'll, we'll look at that and make sure that we're not, um, hurting the community by, um, putting some of these things in place.
And so, uh, this will get cleaned up and brought back to us for the next meeting? Okay. Next is curling lease agreement. Says I'm supposed to call on Tom Amberg, but I don't see him present. So who's gonna cover this?
Mr. Mayor, I can give it a try?
Okay.
So in your packet is a draft of the build-to-suit lease agreement with Glacial Lakes, or excuse me, Glacial Ridge Curling. And it's an extent, it's an extensive agreement. It's really kind of four agreements rolled into one. It's a fundraising and donation agreement that governs how, uh, GRC will raise the money and when it is required to make donations to the city. It's a contract for the design and construction of the facility itself. It sets forth certain, uh, processes for the city to work with GRC collectively, or collaboratively on the design and then sets forth a process for how the facility would actually be constructed in relation to when the donations come in. It's also a lease. It sets forth the terms by which the facility, after it is completed, will be leased to GRC during the curling season. And then finally, it's an operating and maintenance agreement with the Curling Club that sets forth their obligations when they have possession during the curling season as well as the city's, uh, during their period of possession during the off-season. This, uh, lease builds upon the letter of intent that the council approved, uh, earlier this year in April, um, that GRC and the city have both signed at this point. And that really provided the framework for us to develop this agreement. Um, under the agreement, the, that was worked out at the time the letter of intent was improved, uh, GRC will, uh, basically pay for the cost of the project. At this point, it's estimated by GRC to be a $2.3 million project. The lease, or excuse me, the agreement is written in such a way as all project costs, with a couple of exceptions, are going to be paid for by GRC. The exceptions are the $15,500 in utility connections that the council previously approved as part of this project. That's a not-to-exceed amount. So it'd be up to $15,500 for utility connections. And then to the extent during the design process, the city determines that there's certain features that need to be added to this facility beyond, uh, some minimum features that are set out in this document and insists that they be included in the project that's put to bid. The city would be responsible for any overage costs, uh, attributable to that decision. So, um, the agreement envisions, I think, a collaborative process, but there's certainly opportunities for the city and the city has ultimate responsibility to approve the design. Both parties have to approve the design before it's put out to bid. So part of that process is there's some kind of built-in off-ramps for the parties as well. Um, one of them is, uh, given that the parties have to work together on designing the facility and approve the final design, if for some reason the parties are not able to come to an agreement on what that should be, there's just a fundamental disagreement about what needs to go into this project that can't be reconciled, uh, the Curling Club or either party at that point would have the opportunity to terminate this agreement if it would trigger a period where, that you'd have to negotiate, I think for 60 days. But if you couldn't work through whatever disagreements you had, either party could terminate, uh, and then any amounts of money that had been donated already by the Curling Club that had not already been obligated or spent on the project would then be refunded. And then similarly, after the design is completed and it goes to bid, if the lowest responsible bidder, uh, if their bid is just too high for the Curling Club and they don't think they can raise the money necessary to complete the project, uh, at that point, either party would have the opportunity to terminate the agreement as well. And that would trigger, I think, a 90-day window for the parties to try and come together and see if there's adjustments to the project, to the design that could be made to bring it back within the budget. And if, uh, that process did not lead to an agreement, uh, again, the agreement could be terminated and any amounts that had been donated and had not already been spent would be returned to the curlers at that time. Once the facility is constructed, uh, there's, the term of the lease would be 25 years. And that means that during those 25 years, during the curling season, which is generally from April through October, uh, the curlers would have, uh, not exclusive possession, but primary possession during that time. There are certain, uh, rights reserved to the city and certain obligations the curlers would have to provide programming open to the general public. They would have to provide five hours a week of programming open to the public. That could be public lessons, it could be open curling, it could be youth programming. And in addition, if there's times during the curling season when the facility is not otherwise reserved or scheduled, the city would have the right to, uh, conduct its own programming during those times. And there's a statement in here that the parties have to work together to coordinate their scheduling. So the city obviously knows when those windows of opportunity exist. Um, after the 25-year term expires, there would be three potential renewal terms of five years each. So we're really talking about an agreement that's going to potentially govern the party's relationship for 40 years going forward. The general, uh, responsibility. The general, uh, responsibilities during this period would be the Curling Club has a pretty much sole responsibility to operate and maintain the facility during the curling season. The city would have possession of the facility and be responsible for its operations and maintenance during the off-season. The city does have, under this agreement, the primary responsibility to maintain the refrigeration equipment. But apart from that, the Curling Club would basically be in charge of operating the facility and maintaining it and causing any repairs to be made during the curling season. As far as the timing on the donation, it's going to come in phases and this was agreed to as part of the letter of intent, but just as a reminder, the city agreed to, um, proceed with designing the facility at such time as the Curling Club makes a donation of 60% of the amount of the estimated project cost. So, once this agreement is approved, there's going to be a period of time where the curlers are just out raising money and nothing's going to happen immediately and the city would have no obligations until such point as the curlers make the first donation of 60% of the total estimated cost. At that time, the city is obligated to engage an architect to design the facility, to work collaboratively with the curlers at that point. Um, there's an option for the city to, uh, use any plans and specs the curlers have themselves developed through their own consultants, but the fundamental and the primary responsibility and the final say in what this project looks like is the city's decision to make. The curlers would have to agree to this to proceed to the next step where we actually, uh, put the project out for bid and award a contract. The remaining 40% would be donated either in a lump sum, if the curlers are able to raise that much money that quickly, or pursuant to a schedule. The schedule would, uh, require that any, uh, donations of this last approximately 40% of the project be made early enough that the city could make any bond payments for bonds it issues to, to finance the remaining 40% of the project. So the city would always have money donated to draw upon to make those bond payments. That's, I think, the essence of the agreement. Obviously, it's very detailed and I'm happy to answer any questions about it. The, um, I guess the overall message I want to convey is our job in drafting this contract, obviously, we knew the direction from the council. We tried to facilitate this and develop a project and a process that would work for both parties. I think we've done that. We've had, Ike and myself have had several conversations with, uh, Tom Amberg and their attorney, Brandon Zumwalt. Uh, we've worked through a lot of issues already. I do understand the Curling Club, their board of directors approved this draft at their meeting last week. So in addition to facilitating this project and coming up with a process that will work, we're obviously trying to protect the city, to make sure you're not exposed to any risk on this project to the extent we can. I think we've mostly done that. The fact that the, you know, majority of the anticipated project cost has to be donated before the city has any obligations is good protection. Um, the, I guess, windows of exposure that I can see potentially evolving for the city would be if, after donating the, you know, first 60%, the Curling Club has any difficulty raising the latter 40% or more of the project cost, uh, there could be, if not a legal obligation for the city to step in and, uh, pay off any bonds it issues. There could be political pressure. There could be, uh, again, maybe not a legal obligation, but, uh, some pressure on the city to assume part of those costs. That's, we have no reason to suspect that if the Curling Club is successful in raising the first 60%, they'd suddenly run into trouble, but, uh, that's something I think the council needs to be aware of and have their eyes open when they consider this agreement. The other issue would be, uh, even if the project goes off swimmingly and you have a beautiful new dedicated curling facility constructed, if at some point during the 40 years potentially that the lease will be in effect, the Curling Club, um, runs into difficulty and is not a viable tenant or otherwise cannot satisfy its obligations under the lease, the question is, is there another, is there another use for this facility? You would have the right to terminate the lease and seek a new tenant, um, but the question would be, is there actually another tenant out there who would be interested in using a dedicated curling facility? There's potential there to try and work through that issue a little bit on the design process and that's where the city could have some flexibility and some opportunities to, uh, build additional features into this thing, again, probably at the city's expense. So that's a policy question that I don't necessarily think has to be resolved right now, but again, I want the council to be aware of that possibility. If, for some reason, the tenant for whom this project is designed ceases to be a viable tenant in the future, what do we do with this building? At that point, does the city, uh, just take it over and operate it and maintain it completely at its expense, seek a different tenant? Those kinds of questions, uh, I think should be on everyone's mind. And then, uh, finally, uh, is, we've put a lot of work already into this project. This was, uh, we didn't have a curling build-to-suit lease agreement template, so we had to draft one. And, uh, we've got, uh, I think the curlers asked for our quote, I think the work to date our office has put into it is $12,000. There'd obviously be more work, uh, at the point the city issues bonds, uh, through their, uh, financing consultants and bond counsel to do so, and I think the estimates were in the $50,000 to $60,000 range at that time. Under this agreement, the consultant fees, uh, for both legal and financial, that would be incurred by the city, are included in the total project cost, which would be a GRC responsibility. So I know that has been a point that we've discussed several times with the Curling Club. Uh, I think we have an understanding at this point that they're responsible for all project costs, including these necessary costs that the city incurs to facilitate this project. So with that, that's the synopsis of the agreement. If anyone has any questions about that, um, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I just have two things. On your dates, you said that the Curling Club would be using the facility from April to October? Did you mean October to April?
Uh, yep, that's what I meant.
Okay. And then, um, my understanding in conversations that you and I had last week, um, is that if this project was not in front of us, no legal fees would have been incurred to draft a lease. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, one of the reasons, and this is something cities typically put in development agreements, for example. Um, obviously, in drafting this, my client is the city and I'm trying to draft it in a way that will work for the city and protect the city's interests, but it's working on a project that was really brought to you where you're the facilitator. It's for a project to benefit primarily the Curling Club. It's, uh, their conception, they're going to have to agree on the design of the, of the facility and it's a kind of legal fee the city would not incur but for the request from the Curling Club. So that's the justification for, um, asking the Curling Club to assume those, those costs.
And then, uh, it was both of our understandings when we talked last week, that the council said, you know, bring the project forward, but that if the, if there's going to be a project, the projects have to be paid for by the Curling Club. And, um, I mean, that's what I had remembered, the conversation that had happened and also I'm not going to put words in your mouth, Mr. Scott, but I think that's what, was your recollection as well. Uh, we're unable to talk with Mr. Holland because he was on vacation. Um, but, so the question's been asked, should the city pay for some of the attorney's fees going up to this point? And so I had talked with Mr. Scott in regards to this and, and, uh, he'd advised me that if this project was not coming forward, the city would not have incurred that expense, so the expense should be borne by the, uh, Curling Club. And I know that that was one outstanding issue and we thought we had it resolved, but I don't see Mr., uh, Amberg here tonight, but those were just, uh, two things that I want a clarification on, so. So we wouldn't have had those legal fees had this project not been in front of us, so that's why those fees are encumbered into the project itself. If any of you were wondering that. So, council? Councilor Mesky?
Uh, thank you for doing this and I think, for the most part, the city's liability has been taken care of. My question will be on 4.12, the second donation piece. We talked a little bit about that. Um, and if we do a 2.3 million, we're talking about, about 920,000 is our 40%. It's very vague in here because I know there's no, uh, there's supposed to be an exhibit D that will lay out this and it's not here, but, um, I'm a little concerned about that when you talk about periodical donations and then you mention, um, I'm, I'm assuming perhaps it'll be in here that any of the, the funds are doing will at least make the bond payments on time.
Yes.
And that's not exclusively, it's not stated exclusively in here. It's like it'll be, it'll arrive when bonding comes, but we're, we're not talking about that it should actually cover those bonding payments, because if they don't, then I would assume, as you've pointed out earlier, um, we probably feel obligated to do that. And so I think there's a little bit of exposure in that section, but...
That's something that we thought a long time about and essentially what I tried to do to account for that situation is, um, set out the general process. Obviously, we don't know the dates yet. We can't come up with a schedule of dates, but in the event that, uh, the Curling Club doesn't have the money to just make a lump sum second donation, they have that option, but it's not required to do so, the city's going to have to agree to the schedule of dates. And at that time, the schedule would be appended to the contract as exhibit D. It's not available yet, but it would be attached after the fact. And we tied it to the city's obligation to actually award the contract. So if you, for example, look at, um, Article 5 covers the project design and construction and 5.2 is the construction piece of that. And we were, uh, clear, uh, in 5.2, .4 on page 10, that the city doesn't have to award the contract to construct the facility until a number of things have happened. One is that, obviously, the first donation's been made. Um, this, another is that the parties have actually agreed on the final design and one of those pieces is that the city has actually approved the schedule of donations and by that point, you should have an idea of what that schedule needs to be in order to fully have the money you need to make all bond payments.
Thank you. That's an important piece. It's just a little bit farther down. Any timeframe of the repayment of that? I know, again, it's premature without a schedule, but we're not, you're not thinking about the extending it the whole life of a, of the lease or anything else. We're thinking about having a earlier sunset on that?
Yeah, I, I think that's right. The lease contemplates, or the lease would be in effect long after the bonds are paid off.
Right.
Um, the precise form the financing takes is something that would, assuming that has to be issued, is something the council would have to figure out at that time. And the lease, I think, is protective of the city's right to go through all public process, uh, conduct the public hearings, um, actually vote in favor of issuing whatever bonds in whatever form you decide to issue.
Councilor Nelson followed by Christiansen followed by Alvarado.
So the, the intent with the, with the donations though are that they have to have all the pledges made, um, so that it's 100% funded. How those pledges come in is what you're relating to in those sections with how that schedule would read, right?
Correct. By the time the second donation is due or the schedule of dates that will be made has to be determined, you'll know what the low bid is. You'll know a pretty good idea of the actual project costs. So if it turns out that the 2.3 million is light and it's going to be, pick a number above that, you'd be able to build that into the schedule of dates and both parties would have to approve that before the city would award the contract.
Okay. My second question is the, the, um, agenda report we got said that they had approved the agreement on July 30th. That's as you presented it tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Christiansen.
Has there any thought been given to what the city would use that facility for the other six months of the year? I mean, don't you think we should be thinking about that instead of hitting the brick wall when the thing is built? What are we going to do with it?
There have been conversations that have happened on what we would, you know, those conversations were had with, uh, Mr. Brizendine. I don't know that Mr. Christiansen was involved in those. I don't believe he was. Or were you involved in any of those? I don't think so. Um, but we also talked with Visitors and Convention Bureau about uses that they could have. Uh, they have need for more space during the summer months and this would put them at the square footage to where they could bid for a lot of conferences they can't now, um, because they have to have X number of square feet under roof. Um, and so, uh, those are some of the things that have been talked about. Nothing has been solidified or written down that, you know, these are guarantees, but those are some of the things that have been talked about.
That would be my comment. There's, none of this is guaranteed. I mean, um, it all looks great, but we, we better be thinking about what we can use that space for that six months. I mean, you're asking the taxpayers to pay the utilities on it and, uh, maintenance and janitor and all this stuff and to have some building sitting empty when we have a slug of them in Wimmer sitting empty already, commercial buildings. Um, I don't know. I have second thoughts about this. Um, I mean, we're putting this on the backs of the taxpayers, folks. The cost of those other six months, um, and all looks grand. I mean, I, I'm not against curling. I think it's great, but to be spending taxpayer money on an empty building, not using it and not getting revenue from it, I mean, um, if we could come up with, have an agreement with the EDC that they would rent it for three months, you know, that would be half of it, but I don't think they're going to come up with the money to do that. They, they're going to be under the gun too. So let's think about this. Let's think really hard about it. This is a long, long agreement, many, 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 many pages long. Everything's been covered, a lot of its liability, but I don't remember or being part of a conversation about what we're going to do with that for those other six months. But you gotta think about this. This is my money, your money, and everybody that voted for us is money. Um, what are we going to do? We better think about it.
Councilor Alvarado.
Uh, Councilor Christiansen, my timing must be just off here, but anyways, my, I was taking another approach, uh, even before you, you brought, um, your concerns up. What we're seeing in, in the sports world is, um, year-round athletics, whether it's softball, baseball, lacrosse, soccer, you know, it goes on and on. And I'm, I'm wondering if we got a, an option for the Curling Club, should this thing take off and they want a year, a year-round facility, that they have that opportunity, um, with little or no trouble transitioning into something like that?
Councilor Alvarado, it is not accounted for in this draft. It's something that would have to be accomplished by a lease amendment and I would anticipate little difficulty accomplishing that if the circumstances warrant it.
Yeah. I, I just, um, maybe I'm, um, Pollyanna and thinking everything's going to be grand, but I, everything that I'm hearing about curling and the popularity of the sport, not only in the United States, but worldwide, um, boy, I think there's going to be, uh, maybe it'll be a, maybe it'll be a five-year thing, but maybe it'll be a 30-year thing where people just want to jump on board and they can't get enough of it. Um, so I, I, I don't want to take light what you're saying, uh, Mr. Christiansen, but I also want to, um, be realistic, like, uh, this, I believe, um, I think we're going to have a sport that, uh, we're going to have to try to contain. It's going to take off big. Thank you.
Mr. Holland, do you have a recommendation on this?
I would recommend, uh, that we, uh, move this forward and, um, seek a, a vote to approve.
And that would be at the next meeting, correct?
Yes. Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I'm not hearing any opposition to that other than what we've already heard. Uh, nothing else to come before the committee. Uh, so I would like to go back to Mr. Christiansen, our Public Works Director, and, uh, one of the things you had on your update list was, uh, hiring of two new positions. And so could you just cover that very briefly? Um, I know that we, I believe we have those positions open currently.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, are you talking about the assistant engineer and the surveyor?
No, I'm talking about the public works position that you had in your, uh, document. You said there were two public work, works operators' positions open.
Two operators' positions are currently open, correct. I thought you said two new positions.
No.
Two, okay.
Two, two positions open. If I said no, I didn't mean it that way.
Okay, I apologize. Yeah, I'd answer any questions you have. We have currently two, have two positions that are open, one due to retirement and one due to the recent promotion of a project manager within the Public Works Department. And last I looked, in fact, I looked earlier this evening, there are currently 17 applicants for that. And so I anticipate, and, you know, maybe a question for, for HR as well, but I anticipate having those interviews here in the next few weeks, probably, and, and see if we can get some, some people on board before, before fall, fall, winter.
And I guess the reason I wanted you to talk about it a little bit is that these are good jobs, and if you own an opportunity to work for the city, they're good jobs, they're secure jobs, and we need good operators. And, you know, your recent hires have been stellar. You're doing a great job out there, and thanks to you and Gary for the work you guys are doing.
Plus, you get to work with Gary, so...
Yeah, that's, that's the really good part, right? Yeah. So, but anyways, so people that are interested, make sure and fill out that application and show up, and we have some other openings within the city as well, but...
Yeah, it's all online, and Sam may have a better idea on how to easily get to it, but it's through government jobs. I know you can access the link. I think it's also through our website, City Womer website, and you can, it's all electronic. Log in, fill out your application and resume and, and cover letter, and there's six, six or seven jobs available right now.
Thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn. I'm sorry, Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things on miscellaneous. One is, I've had two calls on people concerned with the fence at Miller Park and the tennis court, saying that it looks like a prison. Are we going to do anything to enhance the look of that? I mean, it's, the people living across the street to the south, they open their front door, and they look at this, it looks like a prison. Is there any way to dress that up to make it better-looking to the neighborhood? I was surprised when I got that call. I didn't, until I went over and looked at it, stood across the street at a, at a baseball game, and I thought, wow, there's concern there.
Councilmember Christiansen, mayors, mayor and members of council, it's a standard, I think, 10-foot fence for tennis courts, it's the same thing as what's at the middle school. I think that helps to contain the tennis balls inside the court in, in most cases. As far as dressing it up, I, I would imagine, once the playground is in place, once the grass has been established, and once some of that potential softscape, if you will, or landscape around it, I think, I think that'll ease that a little bit. But I guess I hadn't thought about how else to dress up a 10-foot fence, because that's kind of what we've been doing with, with the tennis courts.
They had mentioned, I know that you can get plastic slats to put on in between them. That's what one of the persons mentioned, and, I mean, it's twice as big as the other one, so it's, it's...
As the previous one, absolutely. I would, I would caution on doing the, the privacy type because of what could happen inside that privacy fence, and so I don't know that I would be, that I would recommend that. You know, they require that on, on things that require screening, and in this case, we don't, the fence isn't there to screen, you know, visual screen, it's there to, to contain the, the game inside the fence, so we could probably plant some, you know, shrubs around it to kind of soften it up a little bit. Like I say, additional trees, we've got the playground going in, we've got some benches that'll go inside the facility itself for the, for the tennis players. We can look into some of that as we, as we get going and, and see if there's some of the same concerns with the fence at the middle school around that tennis court, but...
Well, I told them to, to wait till the project's finished. I mean, it's, it's, when building a home, it's the same thing. When you put the roof on, that's all they see.
Yep.
And when it's finished, you know, it kind of fades off into the background. But I told them I'd bring it up, because, I mean, I went over and looked at it, and it's pretty immense.
Yep.
A lot of fence there.
It's all fence, and it's shiny, it's new, so it's visible.
Okay, well, thank you. I had one other item, and that's, we were going to have a labor meeting and discuss amending the budget as far as wages and many other issues that have come up in labor. Is it raining?
It's just lightning and thundering.
Oh. I guess I should have closed my windows. My understanding is, is that that will be the next meeting, we will be talking about our finance and our adjustments to our budgets. It was on the agenda for tonight, but Councilmember Nelson and I met with staff on Thursday, and they weren't ready at that point, so we asked to move it to the next meeting. We had some questions that we weren't able to get the answers for.
Just...
But those amendments will be coming.
May I? Mayor, thank you. I think the other thing was, it was on the agenda tonight under consent, and we wanted the time to present it, to have it reviewed. So it will be on the work session on the 13th, the budget amendments will be reviewed. So I think Mr. Oakins was prepared to do that, but it was going directly to the consent agenda, so we asked for it to go to the work session.
Thank you.
It'll be on the 20th. Then we are adjourned. Thank you. Now, just so...